All right, now we can get going. This evening, we have five first readings and one second reading. No third or pending. Move into finance. Jim? Jim, you're muted.
Hey, guys hear everything I just said?
There you go. Nothing. This. What'd you say?
So we will open the finance committee meeting at approximately 6:03. We'll start out with Resolution 20R42, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreements with Group of Pension Administrators GPA as third-party administrator, International Assurance of Tennessee, IAT, as stop-loss carrier, ELAP as metric-based pricing network, PROACT as pharmacy benefit manager, PHIA Group for so rogue, sup, sup, I practiced this word too. Subrogation, overpayment recovery, and other recovery collection activities. PHCS, multi-plan network as physician-practitioner-only PPO network, MD Live for telemedicine, and Payer Matrix as specialty pharmacy vendor for New Franklin's self-insurance plan, declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And we talked about this at our last meeting, went through all the numbers. Becky was here and showed us everything and showed us all the money that we're saving with the program. I believe, Mr. Adamson, this is, everybody's the same as last year.
That's correct.
I'm saying just that anybody, and again, if you were in attendance at the last meeting or had the opportunity to watch the video, you'll see that this has really been beneficial for the city, and we think we'll continue to see savings as we go along. Any questions or concerns? Not hearing any? I'll ask that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Well, I'll ask a little bit later, Terry.
Oh, that's right. Never mind. I was jumping ahead. I'm hungry.
Okay, then we'll move on to Resolution 20R44, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to accept fiscal year 2019 assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of a pumper truck and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Now, this is a fantastic grant that we received. The total grant is $556,000. Of that, we will be responsible for approximately $26,400, blah, 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 which is 5% of this grant. So we're, have the opportunity to buy a new pumper truck and, for about $30,000. I will have to pay Gatchel Grant Resources $3,000 for doing all the writing of this and getting it submitted for us and whatnot. And we have Chief Leslie here to help answer any questions that we might have. And I understand that this is going to be replacing a 1986, 84?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four pumper truck. And I had a couple other things, but I don't have them in front of me. Steve, what do you have to say about this?
Well, it is. We started, we started applying for this grant back in 2016. So it's been four years. We've been, we just keep going back and going back. We figured if we asked enough times, they'd finally get tired of us and give it to us. So apparently it worked. So the truck it's going to replace, and it has to replace a truck because that was how the grant was written, it's going to replace our 1984 Pierce engine that is currently assigned at Station 2, the joint station with Clinton. The biggest issues with that truck, it's actually still a fairly decent truck. Equipment, well, I mean, maintenance-wise, we haven't had a whole lot of issues. The biggest problem comes in with it is the safety factor. Is, it's a 1984. It's got an open cab, so the guys in the back ride in. Actually, it's exposed to the weather. It's non-closed, and it doesn't have shoulder belts. It only has lap belts. So that, right there, is huge firefighter safety-wise. And then it does not meet any of the current ODOT or the Department of Transportation requirements for like rollover protection, anything like that. So, so this is huge. I mean, this is, this is a big, this is a big step for us. This alleviates, you know, the budget huge. This was, this was a worry for us. So we originally bought this truck back in 2008. We bought it from Valley City Liverpool Township, and we paid $20,000 for it then. And we've been running it ever since. So we definitely got our $20,000 worth of time out of this truck. It's been a really good truck. But again, it doesn't meet the safety, you know, any of the safety things, the, any of the safety requirements now for firefighters to ride in them. So that's why we're looking to replace it.
So just off the top of your head, approximately how much would it cost to retrofit the current truck to meet those safety guidelines?
Oh, you would have probably close to $400,000 just to retrofit it.
Exactly, so.
It's, it's not cost-effective to retrofit that truck, unfortunately.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, we're getting a half-million-dollar truck for about $30,000. Now, this $30,000 is coming out of the fire department budget, correct?
Yes, it would come out of next year's, out of 2021, and it would come out of our capital improvement fund. So yes, we have that money as of right now in that fund. We specifically held that money back, knowing that we just keep going after this truck. So it's been sitting there for a while.
Yeah, fantastic. So this is not money that's going to come out of the general fund. It's coming out of the fire department fund. It's been saved. They've been waiting for this, this opportunity, and the opportunity is right here in front of us. Chief Leslie, I certainly appreciate you attending our meeting today. Does anybody have any other questions for, for the chief?
I had a question, a couple. So the safety was 1991, I believe, right, when, when the open cabs were outlawed or put? So my first question would be, wide and world, would we have bought something that was illegal then, right? But you don't have to answer that. Other question I have is, are we able to sell the, sell that truck? Obviously, another station couldn't use it, but is that part of the grant we?
Well, we're still trying to figure out. Both good questions. The first question, I can't necessarily answer because I wasn't the chief then. That was with the other chief. So I do know that we were in, you know, dire need of a truck at the time and funds. That was the best we could do with the funds we had available. The other part of it is, this truck, due to the fact that it doesn't meet the specifications anymore, we're going to look into what kind of value it has. And then, but most likely, what we're going to recommend is, we're probably going to see about trading it into whoever, whoever we award the bid to for the new truck and see what kind of deal we can make there. I know they have a tendency to take those trucks, especially a truck like this, and they'll sell it out of the country even. They'll have it shipped out of the country. Because again, it's very hard for them to sell it here because it doesn't meet, meet the safety specs. So.
Okay.
Chief, with that truck, if, if we're not able to sell it and may not get value trade-in, would we still be able to use it as a backup truck, as a two-person truck, when we not use the, the back open cab area?
Well, no, we're not allowed to because the, the way the grant was written.
Just replacing, right.
Written to replace that 1984 truck. And that was, that was a huge factor in why we received this grant. Because we're still running that 1984 truck with the open cab. I think that was, that was a real big feather in our cap, so to speak, to move this along with them.
Okay, excellent. Other questions, comments?
Harry, um, yes, I agree with you totally because I was on that once and it's time to go. Wasn't my favorite.
Just a couple of things real quick. One, one of these days, we'll turn on the TV and Borat will be driving that truck somewhere. I just hope he takes the New Franklin logo off before, before he goes. Just wanted to acknowledge, first of all, the chief for staying with it. Adam Gillit is our current fire grant coordinator. But this one, Leland Matheny gets a tip of the cap, a big one. He was real proud of this, and he was the one who was shepherding this along prior to his retirement. And he's now, as you know, our, our part-time grants coordinator. And so he was, this sort of capped him off in that, in that aspect. And he's, he's really thrilled, and we're really happy that, to have him and for the work he did on this. And I promised I would also mention Vera and DeeDee Gatchel. And you guys hear a lot about, you know, Gatchel grant writers, but there they are. It's Vera and DeeDee, and they've got an office down in Canton, and they built that practice up themselves. And they're, they're very good at it, and they're very cordial, and they're very persistent. And, and so we want a big tip of the hat and a thank you to them as well. They've done a great job for us, and they continue to do a good job for us. So thank you.
Hey, Leslie, real quick. We received one bid so far for a truck for $550,000. But you indicated, I believe, that we're going to be getting other bids also. How many bids are you looking to get and timeframe for all this to happen?
Well, we're, we're looking to get at least three bids. We need to develop specs first. The, the original estimate that was originally sent into them was nothing more than a bid estimate, I guess, or a, maybe a budget estimate for what we were asking for. I don't believe we're going to have any kind of problem meeting, you know, being able to spend 550, 556,000 on a truck. But the, we're hoping to do it. It'll probably be this time next year before we see this truck. It'll be in 2021, just with the fact of the way the, the development goes. We, we're going to form a committee. A committee is going to made up, the Assistant Chief, Tim Young, is going to chair that committee. And what we're going to do is, we're going to put some, some of the younger guys, a few of the older guys on there, and they're going to go through and look at all of the trucks and then come back with recommendations. They're going to develop the spec, and then we'll send the spec out to the different manufacturers to see who can meet it. There are a number of manufacturers currently that are on the state bid program. We'll have to see how that, how that pans out and how that works into it too. But we're hoping to get the best bang for our buck with this. So, but it'll be a committee, there will be a committee formed. It's already actually being formed now to look at, you know, what truck we're going to purchase.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions or concerns? Again, Chief Leslie, thanks for coming in. If nobody has questions or concerns, I believe we can waive the three on this. Terry? Did you want a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Hey, right, man. But can we go ahead and excuse Steve at this point?
I, I don't have any other questions for him.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Bye.
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 We will move on to Resolution 20R45, a resolution creating a separate fund for the South Main Street Resurfacing Project and authorizing appropriations to the South Main Street Resurfacing Project Fund, Fund 2068 in the amount of $678,334.24, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And, Mr. Adamson. So, so this is just a, like we did with Center Road. It's basically an account to get the money in and put the money out type thing.
Yeah, and it was a little bit more complicated because we share this with Green since it's a project that we're doing, working with them on since we each own half the road. So the, the ODOT funds, 678,000, the number you see there, that's what's coming from the state. And, and it will entirely, we were the lead agency on this, so it'll entirely pass through New Franklin. So this allows us to create that fund, appropriate those funds, and eventually we'll get reimbursed from the state. There's about, there's approximately $200,000 balance left by the time we add the design in and, and the, and our percentage of the, of the total. We split that with Green, so it comes to just a little bit under 100,000. And New Franklin, we're going to pay that out of our permissive fund that's held by the county. So none of this money for this project is going to come out of the general fund or out of our budget this year. So that's a big deal. And they, as of right now, they plan to start construction, installation next Tuesday.
Questions, comments? Not hearing any? Again, we'll ask to waive the three on this so we can move forward with everything. Hello?
Jim, I'm sorry. I do have a comment. Paul is right. That is a really big deal. That's not a small deal. That's a really big deal.
Thank you, Judy.
Really, Paul, it is.
No, no, well, it's right on time. Thank you. Hey, Susan is on vacation this week. That's why she's not with us tonight.
Okay, moving on then to Resolution 20R46, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Transportation Accessories Company Incorporated and Insight Public Sector for the purchase of bus cameras and bus and building camera playback and monitoring equipment for Manchester local schools in conjunction with the COPS Office Stop School Violence Prevention Program Award, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this will provide eight bus cameras at a price of $31,928. And then the, the playback and monitoring equipment at a cost of $5,404.30. And if you remember from meetings way back, this is a grant that was applied in conjunction with the school board and, but had to go through the city to do it. So, so we basically write checks for them when they request and, and turn in the proper documentation. Correct? Am I missing anything, Mr. Adamson?
You got it.
Questions, comments? Waive the three, and we will close the finance committee meeting at this time. I don't know what time it is.
6:19.
Thank you. 6:19.
All right, I'm back on. Andy, we'll go to community development. Thanks.
Right, we'll open up at 6:20. Resolution 20R43, Resolution declaring September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Education Month. This year, approximately 122,000 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone, with roughly 33,000 dying from the disease. In Ohio, it's estimated 7,000 new cases each year with 1,200 deaths. Men with relatives with a history of prostate cancer is twice as likely to develop the disease. It is the second-leading cause of cancer death in American men behind lung cancer. I don't know how much more, I mean, what the proclamation is to just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I could, we were approached by a lady by the name of Linda Hootger. And she has been on a campaign for about 11 years now to try to raise awareness for, and cancer, prostate cancer awareness and education. And a direct result of her husband, who was a 20-year veteran of the Air Force, who was diagnosed with an aggressive form back in '09. And, and she, she had a sincere concern that there just wasn't enough awareness. So she's been quite a campaigner. She's contacted us in the past, and she's been very successful. There has been a bill introduced into the Ohio State House in 2018 called Zero the End of Prostate Cancer. And they're going to create license plates, and funds from those plates will stay in the state to reduce, for prostate cancer awareness. As of June 11th, 2020, it had passed both sides of the state house. It was waiting the governor's signature. So this is, it's a statewide initiative, and it actually, it has also spread to a number of other states, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Georgia, Tennessee, and New York. So I appreciate council's interest in sponsoring this. And, boy, it's really a worthy cause, and it's, hey, we all know somebody, probably, who, who suffered or died from this disease. And we all know how stubborn and stupid men are, that we just don't like to go to doctors and get tests. But it's not about us. It's about the people that count on us. So anything we can do to raise that awareness is appreciated. And if you pass this tonight, she does dock at these, and I will send it down to her. She keeps track of the proclamations and resolutions on Google Map, and she'd be honored to add us to that as well. So I will forward it to her if and when council approves it.
Anyone have any questions or anything on it?
Andy, I don't have a question, but I do have to say, I had no idea it was the second number-one killer of men. I did not know that. I had no idea of that. So I think this is very important.
Okay, I don't see why we couldn't waive the three on that tonight then and get it going. We will close at 6:23.
All right, thank you, Andy. Moving to laws and ordinances. Ms. Norris?
Good evening. Thank you. All members are present with the committee, and we will come to order at 6:23. We have one item to address in the committee. It's on the second reading. It's ordinance number 20-O-03, an ordinance authorizing the city of New Franklin to enter into agreements with the city of Green to create a regional council of governments for the purpose of sharing services and to create a shared public safety dispatch center and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. We received two revised Exhibit A and B. Mayor, you want to go ahead and discuss those for us, please?
Yeah, thank you. We introduced this two weeks ago, and Green was, was scheduled to introduce those. And then there was a question about the, when, the effective date of the COG, when it became, when it actually becomes effective. Under the version of the revised code that existed, when we looked at this back in 2018, there was, it provided that everything got sent down to the state auditor, and then the state auditor kind of gave it the blessing, and that's the way these exhibits were drafted. We were, it was then pointed out that there had been an amendment to that section, Chapter 167. And the, the COG will actually become effective once it's been approved by both councils. So that's the effective date of the council, and that's really what the, the changes were in Exhibits A and Exhibit B, were to, to specify that that is the effective date for the council. And that was the primary purpose of the amendment. Fortunately, or anyway you want, it was caught prior to Green introducing it. So Green will be introducing this for their first reading next Tuesday. And if, in fact, it goes three readings, that would go through October 13th. So we're expecting a couple more readings on this. We will have for you, cause, the firm cost estimates. And that's been a little bit of state of flux. I told you before, it looks to, it looks like that we will stand to save upwards of $100,000. But maybe more importantly, we'll have a more effective dispatch, and particularly as it relates to staffing issues. So it's sort of a win-win from those perspectives. That cost estimate, we're fine-tuning a couple things because we have to talk to the computerated dispatch people. We're, we're going to be switching from Sundance to Tyler New World because that's what the county's on. That's what Green's on right now. So we don't, we don't have a firm cost estimate from them. They're coming in tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. So short form is this, we will have those cost estimates to you before we get to our next meeting. In addition, then, we will also, at the next meeting, what I would plan on is to have the chief, Chief Davidson, Chief Leslie, and, and probably Michelle Matheny, the dispatch supervisor, join us so they can share with you their thoughts on this transition into a, a joint dispatch with Green. So we'll have them here in two weeks as well, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, I was going to suggest we go to three readings at a, you know, at a minimum on this. And would you have a comparison for us as to why you feel that will save money?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Then we'll ask for time at the appropriate time David Stock.
All right. Anybody else got anything that takes care of our legislation? Anybody got anything they'd like to talk about in their committees? All right, no reason why we can't get this party started here. I've called to order the city of New Franklin Council this Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020. I would say it's probably around 6:30. We all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation. Under God. With liberty and justice for all. All right, there we go. All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Cots?
Hello? Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Haw?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here. I'd like to make a motion to approve amendments from the regular scheduled meeting of August 19th, 2020.
Second.
First and second. Any comments, discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Haw?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
All right, I do got, actually, it's a question. I'm going to go ahead and just go. I got a question on the Facebook. It asked, and this is going to be directed towards you, Paul. I think we've discussed it. It said, would it be cheaper to join SWCOM? Is a question from one of our viewers.
We looked at the cost on that before. There's a buy-in on that. We haven't, we haven't gone back to them for a specific estimate at this point in time because of a couple of things. We're, we're more interested in, in getting online with the rest of the county. And the Summit County Initiative, among other things, is for this, the CAD system, the Tyler New World, which unfortunately Swisscom is not on. They're, they're on Sundance, and they're pretty much by themselves on that at this point in time. So, so there's that. And there's forward thinking involved here in terms of creating this council with Green, that it's a good partner to have. We think that down the road, as the, as the push for regionalization continues, and as I think I've mentioned to you before, right now Summit County's talking about trying to regionalize dispatch. But there's a lot of maybes. It will happen. I don't know it'll happen as quick as they think it will. But if, for our purpose, it wouldn't happen for two years. But, so to try to, to be part of that regionalization, it makes more sense to go in this direction. The Swisscom is sort of an island to themselves. They do a nice job, but, so we just don't think that's an effective option for us at this point in time.
All right, thank you. That's all I got as far as comments or any questions. Katie, you got anything else, or? I guess I'm seeing the same thing. Oh, here we go.
Come in, yep.
Okay, how, it just says, how about the South Main Street resurfacing? I guess we just talked about that, when that's starting.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Okay, that should answer that one. And that, they're always going to have one lane open. You're going to be having traffic controlled out there with always one lane, and they're going to be stopping traffic. And, I mean, so if you can avoid the area, I would avoid the area. But if that's the only way you got, you'll be able to get to your place of business or your home along that route. It might just take you a little longer than normal.
It's true.
All right. Give it a few, a minute here. All right. Again, we have five first readings tonight, one second, no third or pending. We'll move into our first readings, and our first reading would be Resolution Number 20-R-42. Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreements with group and pension administrators GPA as third-party administrator, international assurance of Tennessee IAT as stop-loss carrier, ELAP as metric-based pricing network, PROACT as pharmacy benefit manager, PHIA Group for subrogation overpayment recovery and other recovery collection activities, PHCS multi-plan network as physician practitioner only, PPO Network, MD Live for telemedicine and Payor Matrix as specialty pharmacy vendor for New Franklin self-insurance plan and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution has been assigned to the finance committee. We ask to waive the three readings on resolution twenty R forty-two.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty R forty-two.
Second.
Yeah, first and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke? Mr. Hawke?
Tony, you got, you're muted. There you go.
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
All right, passes seven to zero. Thank you. Move to resolution twenty dash R dash forty-three, Kelly?
A resolution declaring September as prostate cancer awareness and education month.
This resolution was assigned to community development and I moved that we waived to three.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I move that we adopt resolution twenty R dash forty-three.
Second.
Second, any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We move to resolution twenty dash R dash forty-four, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to accept a FY two thousand nineteen assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of a pumper truck and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. And as we talked about during the committee meetings, this is fantastic opportunity for us. Five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar grant that will be able to purchase a new truck and only costs the city about thirty thousand dollars. And then that money will come out of the fire department's capital improvement fund, which they've already been saving the money for. So we'd like to request move to waive the three readings on twenty R forty-four.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty R four-four.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Excuse me, all right, that passes seven to zero. Thank you. Move to resolution twenty dash R dash forty-five, Kelly?
A resolution creating a separate fund for the South Main Street resurfacing project and authorizing appropriations to the South Main Street resurfacing project fund, Fund two zero six eight in the amount of six hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cents and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty R forty-five.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty R forty-five.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Thank you. Move to resolution twenty dash R dash forty-six, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Transportation Accessories Company Incorporated and Insight Public Sector for the purchase of bus cameras and bus and building camera playback and monitoring equipment for Manchester local schools in conjunction with the COPS Office Stop School Violence Prevention Program award and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on twenty R forty-six.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Excuse me, yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty R forty-six.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Thank you. Move into our second reading ordinance number twenty dash O dash zero three.
An ordinance authorizing the city of New Franklin to enter into agreements with the city of Green to create a regional council of governments for the purpose of sharing services and to create a shared public safety dispatch center and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage.
We're gonna need time on this, Andrea?
Yes.
All right, time is gonna be granted for that. No third readings are pending. We're gonna move into the mayor's report. Paul, turn your mic on, Paul.
All right. There you go. Let's see, we talked about the fire truck, happy about that one. Federal COVID funding, not quite so happy. It's still a federal mess. They keep getting mixed signals. Conference call with Summit County on Tuesday. I think the last time I talked to you, Summit County had proposed this fifteen percent, twenty-five percent of payroll for payroll replacement and from the Summit County's share of the COVID money. And we were advised Tuesday that they got additional directives from the Treasury Department that said that, they come in the strangest forms. It comes in a Q and A form. If you sense any frustration, I can imagine what the people who deal every day in Washington must feel. Because this was something that was supposed to be cleared up months ago. Anyway, they are now saying that they want, that they're gonna want specific data, for lack of a better term, to confirm that any payroll, any funds that are used for payroll for safety forces are used only for the portion of safety forces who are substantially dedicated to COVID response. And we're not so dedicated in the initial budget, which is a number that's difficult, if not impossible, to concretely arrive at. So that is the latest. I'm not shocked by that. Because when it was written, that's the way it looked from my end, but the county took their position. So that's, that's in a state of flux. We don't know how that's gonna play out. I, I still expect that they're gonna loosen. We're told by both, both of our senators, Portman and Brown. I've been on those conference calls and that they're confident that the Senate, when they reconvene and they look at the next round of COVID funding, that they'll clear up the language as to how the municipalities can spend the funds from the initial round of funding. So they thought that would have happened two or three weeks ago. Instead, they couldn't agree and they went home and they're coming back. So we'll hope for the best. Meanwhile, we're getting another two hundred and some thousand dollars from the state from House Bill four eighty-one. So we've already received, we've got those, that money on the books, four hundred and ten thousand dollars. And now that'll grow to about six hundred thousand. Under that fifteen percent, twenty-five percent formula, we would have been able to cover about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of payroll. And in essence, make up for in the event we have a shortfall of revenue, it would, it would make up for that. We are probably under the same restraints using that House Bill four eighty-one money that we are under the Summit County Monday. It's, I, these are the kind of things that happen when you do, when you get federal money. But I'm still optimistic that, that they'll clear it up. We've got some ideas of how we can approach that and give them the type of verification they need to, to use it for the payroll replacement that we already anticipated.
Something came through.
We are also looking at.
How do I get to it?
Well, we'll know on that, you know, probably, I don't know, by the end of October, probably. So we'll just continue to monitor that. We're still in good shape from a financial standpoint. So, you know, we're not in dire straits of any kind. Meanwhile, that money is there. And if we don't use it for payroll, even if we do, we could use it for other COVID funding. They are talking about another round of funding for businesses. Summit County is. And which would include profit and nonprofit and possibly even some of the churches. So right now Summit County's trying to get creative of, you know, please tell us how we can spend this ninety-six million dollars so that we don't have to spend, send it back to the federal government. So that's, that's what's going on, on that front. We are, we are going to submit a proposal for broadband expansion to Summit County as soon as we get the nuts and bolts of it from Spectrum. We've reached out over the years, we've had a bunch of people reach out to us and say, hey, there's no, there's no broadband where I live. And Spectrum wants, AT&amp;T isn't interested in coming at all and Spectrum wants twenty grand to come down the street. So they don't have it. And we've identified, I can't, how many, how many households did we have, Katie? We had thirty or so or forty? I'm sorry?
Thirty-five.
Okay, so those are the initial ones. So we have Spectrum putting a proposal together for us. And we're going to apply at Summit County to see if Summit County will, will give us COVID money so we can extend broadband to people that don't have it who now it, you can, you can say desperately need it for home education, for work at home, for telehealth, et cetera. On that note, if there's anybody out there, and we have reached out and talked about and advertised this before, but if there's anybody out there who in New Franklin, who there is no service available to you, not just, not just, I don't like AT&amp;T, we get, we get a lot of calls on that one. But, and not to, and Spectrum too, you know, equal opportunity. But if you just don't have it, if they don't offer it, please reach out to us, let us know that. Because it looks to me like Summit County's gonna have a pot of money, they just don't know how else to spend. And that would be a great thing for us to expand it because some of the areas we're looking to expand it are in our quasi-rural areas. And we think that'll help us for development down the road, that the fact that cable's already there for, as far as additional residential development. So that's what's going on there. We are continuing discussions, consideration regarding the Tudor House and possible expansion and, and proposals for outside firms that might be interested in that. We have had a couple of meetings. We sort of town hall kind of concept, we're trying to get the word out to people. We have, we're listening to what people are saying. We are meeting with the people that love it. We're meeting with the people that had concerns. The best I could say, and what's trickled back to me at this point in time, I don't, I haven't talked to anybody yet that says, I don't want you to do anything out there. And we got a real strong core of people, not to say they don't exist, I'll probably hear from them tomorrow. But the, but there's a strong core and the people that have invested time out there for years have always wanted another facility that the city could, could utilize. Because the house itself is too small for the kind of things we'd like to do out there. And that was always a discussion relative to pavilion, open air. And then we got around to a four-season room. And then lately we had this pitch that, well, maybe we got somebody who might want to build a pavilion and a four-season room. And then it became a question of, gee, where it's gonna be, too close to the lake, what about noise? And we're listening to all those things. And we got some thoughts on it, so I will keep everybody posted. We will certainly, when we are, move a little bit farther to the point where, where we put some type of request for proposals together and that's what we'll do, we'll get, we'll gather everybody again who has an interest. And we've been able to do that at the Tudor House, open air. So it's an outside meeting so that we're able to observe safe distancing protocols. And so we'll keep everybody in the loop on that. And I'm always open to discussion for any thoughts or ideas anybody has. The policy manual is done. And now it will go to, I mean, that's like yesterday, so the final version. And I will get that out to the Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board. They're gonna have to review it and meet and make any suggested changes and then eventually approve a copy of it and make a recommendation for the council's approval as well. I will get that preliminary form out to all you folks as well. And if you're having trouble sleeping, this is your ticket. It's about a hundred and twenty-nine pages long. And I'll tell you preliminarily on that, it's, it's, it's really gotta be read together. It's, so there's been, I can't even count the hours that went into this. And the input from every department. And I think we have, we have something that all departments are on board with. And there's been multiple changes. And sometimes you read page twenty and you say, well, I don't know about that policy, but it really kind of fits. If you read page sixty-seven, you see, okay, well, that's where this offsets. So it's a, you know, you gotta read the body, the whole thing. So I'm trying to get that out to you folks early as well because once it reaches you, then ultimately it's council that's gonna have to approve this. So we got that moving. Lastly, I want to welcome Linda Morgan. Question on that? All right. I want to welcome Linda Morgan and she is our new service department administrative assistant. She happens to be a Manchester High School graduate and grew up out here and had excellent qualifications, worked in advertising for a number of years, high-level positions, very fluent in the skill sets that Brian needs. She's been on board now a week and a half. He's real happy with her and I think you will be too. So she's a great hire and we welcome her aboard and that's all I have. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Paul. Did Sue leave you anything for a finance report, Paul, or?
She did not.
All right, move into old business. Any old business? All right, new business? Any new business? All right, we're looking for some questions now. I haven't seen nothing new for a little while, Katie?
I haven't either.
We gonna have any kind of executive session, Paul?
No.
All right. 20 seconds, we're giving them 20 seconds. Put them on the clock, Katie. This kind of 20 seconds feels like 20 minutes, though. So. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to adjourn.
Back up.
Got a second, all in favor? As have it, our next council meeting will be September 16th, 2020. I don't see what'd be any different, Paul.